I just have one brief personnel matter involving the ZBA. Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Any others? Hearing none. We have a motion to go into this session. We have a motion. Second? And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Ayes have it. Do we need to amend the agenda tonight for any reason?
I haven't got anything.
Neither do I.
We'll do accept.
We'll make the most to accept the agenda as posted. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yeah. It's an aye night.
Happy hour.
Oh, good. Let's see. Act on the Select Board meeting minutes of June 19th. Is there any admissions, corrections around the mess? Hearing none.
I just had a question though because I missed most of that meeting.
Okay, I've got a question.
What was the minor change?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Dave had said that he had asked whether we had heard anything from Regional Planning Commission about a speed or traffic counter being deployed on Furnace Road. And the way it was written up sounded like an answer was given when it was just quoting him asking about the status.
Oh, okay.
I think that's right, right Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. I'm trying to think how it went. I already, I guess in the minutes, it was as if I was asking you if you had gotten hold of Regional.
Yeah.
When in fact what I asked you was if you had heard back from them.
Got it.
Okay.
Do we have any question on orders? We've got a bunch of them.
No, we've got several. There were some that were signed last week. And now we've got a new batch which has both fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 orders.
Right.
I did email those.
I have a question.
I emailed those new orders to you Dave.
First you did.
I hope you got them this afternoon.
Yeah, no, I've seen them.
Okay.
What's your question?
On 3105, what is almost $30,000 to Rutland County?
Oh, that's our annual payment, like all towns pay, to the Rutland County primarily for judicial services. In other words, it's our share of the court costs at the Rutland Courthouse.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Okay.
I noticed a $3,742 expense here for, it just says radiator and AC on Highway Truck Five. God, I bought a brand new radiator, complete, for $1,700 for my truck. I wonder just what the...
Is that one of the new orders, Joe?
No.
Throw it in our regular packet.
It was in the regular packet.
Okay.
I saw that.
It seemed like quite a bit for Truck Five.
Is that the one that got it out?
That's the one that has been having the trouble. Greg Eastman has possession of that. And what's the name of the contractor, Joe? Or the vendor?
New England Kenworth.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can find it for you.
$3,742.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Just wondering whether it's a lot more towards than...
Yeah, I can certainly follow up with you, but I'm going to try to see if I can find it right now. You say New England Kenworth?
Yeah.
You said this is the original packet.
Yeah, it was in the original.
Okay, I don't think I have the original orders that were signed last week, but I can certainly research that, Joe, and report back to you.
The Otter Creek Engineering, the Depot Hill Pump Station, there's three different expenditures that are... What's that for?
It's for the design work on the Depot Hill Pump Station replacement project. They pay, or they're paid based on progress through 100 percent. And these are progress payments that they've submitted payment for, request for payment for.
You've got about $18,000 there, and this is all in preliminary study?
No, the preliminary study was, I think, around $6,700. Now we're into the $39,000 of actual design.
Yes, that answers that question. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Dave, we haven't forgotten about you. Everybody's signing papers now.
No, I can hear the paper shuffling.
Where are you?
Calgary.
Maybe you don't want to tell us where you are right now.
Maybe I'm not telling you where I really am.
That could be.
We'll never know the difference.
Right. Probably that's all messed up now. Oh, well. You messed them up, Dave. They're all from the same place.
Yeah, I'll sort them out.
You sort them out after.
This is the best on purpose.
One girl's, hey, I did it on purpose. Give it to Dan Fuller. No, we don't need them anyway. You should save them out after. Right? You have to something. Whoops, excuse me.
Paying attention.
Sorry. I wasn't paying attention. You're right.
Oh, you always got to see them.
They're pretty quiet tonight, so I don't know. We'll limit them to five minutes apiece.
Good.
That's bad. I'll put this one right forward. How's that? You don't care? I know you don't.
Nope.
Town managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy Independence Day.
Same to you.
Thank you. The Pittsburgh Village Farm Touch a Truck event, just as a reminder, is now scheduled for Saturday, July 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The cider tasting that had been associated with that has been canceled because the orchard had a conflict for the new date. So there'll be no need for any action by the Liquor Board. And there'll be the second of two public hearings on the event ordinance that the Select Board has been considering, and that will take place Wednesday, July 17th, at 6:30, two weeks from now, in conjunction with the Select Board meeting of that night. On Thursday, June 27th, the town manager and highway foreman attended a FEMA workshop on how to collect reimbursement funding for repairs to infrastructure damaged in the April 15th rainstorm event, which is now the subject of a presidential emergency declaration for several counties in Vermont. On Wednesday, June 26th, there was a pre-proposal meeting at the transfer station for local contractors interested in making proposals to address the shed's roof leak and possibly extending the roof over the garbage compactor. Wayne Guyard, the transfer station attendant, was there, as was I and the highway foreman. We also had a Casella executive present so he could be sure that there would be no conflicts with any planned design and the need for Casella drivers to access the garbage box and swap it out on occasion. Unfortunately, no one showed up in response to the classified ad in the Brandon Reporter since we were trying to get to local contractors. So we will now publish an ad in the Rutland Herald and cast a wider net. Hopefully, we'll get some people showing up at the next opportunity, which will be, I think, on June 10th, with bids due on June, July 16th, I'm sorry, at 10. The Lister's Office has lodged the grand list, so as soon as we have all the necessary information from the state, the Select Board will be asked to set tax rates, as we do every year, sufficient to raise the revenues called for by the result of budget votes at town meeting last March. This may occur at the July 17th meeting or at a special meeting devoted simply to that topic, depending on the timing of inputs from the state and any other deadlines we're facing. The town, its contractor, and other stakeholders such as Omea, Casella, Florence Crushstone, and Vermont Rail will have a meeting in advance of the road reconstruction work to be done on Whipple Hollow Road. This meeting will take place at Omea on Monday, July 29th, at 9 o'clock. And finally, the town offices will be closed tomorrow, July 4th, in observance of and celebration of Independence Day.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do we have any...
One question.
Yeah.
And maybe he said that, is there a specific date when the tax rate has to be set by?
No, actually, I think there is a specific date, but we're not going to be anywhere near it. I think it's toward the end of July. So as long as we do it by middle of July, we're in good shape. I don't have the specific date, but there is by statute a deadline. So if we're having trouble with July 17th and we get something from the state that we need that's critical, we can have a special meeting thereafter. But I'm hoping that we'll be ready and in place for the July 17th date.
Okay.
Any Select Board remarks at this time? Hearing none. We'll ask the public if there's any comment. And hearing, oh, are you Mr. Public? Hearing none. We'll go on to old business. Discussion of the Chittenden Dam Alert Siren.
Yes, you remember, or some of you do, a couple of you were not here till afterwards, Jan Sodarakis was at a recent town Select Board meeting, asking for Pittsburgh to contribute toward the cost of installing additional sirens that had been donated for that purpose from other municipalities. And we were going to discuss that once we had a full board present, and now we do, by way of modern technology and our telephone, and leave it up to you folks as to what your thoughts are about how much, if at all, you'd like to contribute to this cause of warning our fellow residents in East Pittsburgh about a catastrophic breach of Chittenden Dam, which we hope never happens.
Contact, yeah.
Oh, I was going to say if anybody turned anything, because it's also been in the paper too.
I felt that we should be doing something.
That we should.
Yeah. Well, I don't know who's going to monitor.
I think I asked if there was any information available on the regulations that are applied to that. Now I'm up there, and so we could, I felt as though I'd like to see what kind of regulations are on it currently before we consider making our own regulations, if so to speak.
Well, we're not being asked to regulate in any way. We're just being asked to contribute toward the cost of putting sirens up. Can you tell me exactly what you meant by your earlier request? I don't know that we've gotten anything on that.
Well, I think that there are already stipulations as to how the safety and directions as to how the safety of that reservoir is handled, regardless of any sirens or anything.
Well, certainly, Green Mountain Power has kind of control over the dam. That's their source of electricity, the hydro plant there. And that's why they've been working with emergency preparedness personnel, including Jan and myself, regularly to try to set up an emergency response plan, which would hopefully save us a lot of time when time is going to be short, to deal with an event of this kind by road blockages, shelter setups, and interacting with the state and even federal government, seeking needed support as it becomes apparent from a storm. So we've had Rutland Town, Rutland City, the town of Chittenden, the town of Pittsburgh represented at these meetings to try to kind of develop a plan that can be on the shelf and ready at a moment's notice to throw into action if we get word of either an actual breach or a concern about a possible breach. Also to include police dispatch and the emergency response folks. So Green Mountain Power is ultimately responsible for the safety of that dam. And I know that they've contributed by way of making space available and by, I think, discussing on an ongoing way concessions on any power usage, which I know Dave Mills was interested in them having done, on the possibility of energizing these sirens such that it's not an expense of the towns, but rather a GMP expense. That's being pursued separately. They're asking us for a one-time contribution toward their budget to install additional sirens. They have installed some. And I think that she was talking about, you'll all correct me, a budget of overall about $10,000. And I think that's where it is. That's where we stand.
I think, I think what Joe was referring to, if I remember his question correctly, evidently when that initial siren was put in, the town of Pittsburgh had discussion about it and decided not to chip anything in.
Right.
And I think what he was looking for was the minutes from that meeting as far as why we decided at that point not to chip in. Is that correct, Joe?
That certainly adds up to what I'm thinking.
I can certainly produce those. I don't have them for now, unfortunately. But I certainly remember the discussion in having to do with, yes, if we had unlimited resources, it's a great idea, but the risk seems so remote that some selectmen decided not to invest at that time.
And at the time, I think there was only the one siren in question. Now there's quite a few that they're putting in.
Yeah.
And it wasn't reaching the whole area. I attended one of the first meetings when this whole thing started in Rome, and that involves state police, state police dispatchers, the whole gamut. And the big thing was that in the event of, say, a terrorist attack, you know, where somebody put a bomb, who the hell knows what could happen? Where you had a major breach, there is not enough time to notify anybody without having sirens, because it's just impossible.
The towns that are downstream will have a little bit of time.
Very little time.
To vacate.
Right.
But the folks in East Pittsburgh, or in East Pittsburgh and Chittenden will have no real option other than just to get to high ground immediately. And the siren was intended to give them that quick notification.
If I remember correctly, I believe the Chittenden Fire Station would be something like 25 feet underwater if it happened.
Yeah.
So it would be a major disaster.
Right.
So, I don't know. My feeling is, I think we should contribute a little bit. We've got taxpayers over there, and certainly it would be a little to try to protect them if we can. So I don't know what you're thinking monetary. I would suggest maybe 2,500 bucks.
Do we have, do we have number, I know there's around 30 houses in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, there is.
So we'll take a couple.
Yeah.
I guess one of the things I thought of, because, I mean, I'm not against chipping in a little money to help put the siren in that will notify those people. A thought that I had afterwards were, let's say there's 60 houses that that specific siren will notify. If half of them were Pittsburgh, we chip in, you know, 1,500 or 2,000, whatever it ends up being, for the half of the cost of that siren. Again, I'm strongly opposed to us having to pay the power on it every year. That, they need to work out on their own.
Right.
But I'm not against, you know, a small contribution to get a siren in to warn our people.
So you're saying that it would be a proportionate amount compared with, comparing the number of East Pittsburgh residents with the number of Chittenden residents? Is that your idea?
Well, yeah, I thought that's a way to, you know, that way we're covering our people, yet we're not paying for a siren that's, you know, going to notify half the town of Pittsburgh or half the town of Chittenden. It's just, it was a way to drop the number back down so it's a little easier on us and yet still contribute to keeping our people safe. Just a thought.
How much is involved trying to find out?
Well, I could certainly talk to Jen. She's the Emergency Management Director in Chittenden, even though she's an East Pittsburgh resident.
Right, she is.
And I'm sure she would have those numbers. And I'm sure if she thought the conversation was heading in a good direction, she'd be happy to wait a little bit longer while we crunch those numbers and got back to you at the next meeting, for example. We could certainly do that. And we could get those minutes from the last meeting that we discussed this at for Joe.
I'm trying to think.
Yeah.
Is there, if we were to sign into this with them, is there, is Pittsburgh going to be responsible for the maintenance and the operation costs of that all the way along?
My understanding was one-time, one-time thing to stop the install.
That's my understanding as well.
Well, maybe the power company will donate.
Well, they're going to donate, they're having discussions about donating the electrical component, but the infrastructure, the actual siren installation is, I think, what's at stake here. Yeah.
Once it's installed, we shouldn't have to install the unit.
Yeah.
Over a period of years, the maintenance and the operational costs will be more than what the original...
I'm sure nobody can promise, I'm sure nobody can promise never to come back and ask for more, but you can always say no at that time. You always have that power. Let me do this additional bit of snooping and get back to you at the next meeting.
Yep, sounds good. Town emergency plan. The energy plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you missed it at the last meeting because you were doing, you all were doing important work at the school board last time, at the last meeting. But you missed the remarks of Mark Winslow and, to some extent, Rick Conway and some other members of the Planning Commission, who expressed kind of concern and frustration maybe with the morphing of a solar power, solar panel plan into a full-blown energy plan with mandates from the state and the Regional Planning Commission that it deal with 14 complex points and that it would require reopening or amending the town plan to incorporate that into the town plan, that it would not necessarily serve as a standalone plan if we were to submit it for Regional Planning Commission approval. So in your packets, there is the memo from Mark Winslow describing his concerns about it, and they canceled their June meeting, to some extent based on the fact that they wanted to hear some guidance from the Select Board before they continued working on this topic. So I think they feel as though they're at a fork in the road and they need guidance from the board as to whether you want them to continue to try to satisfy the Regional Planning Commission with a full-blown energy plan, which may have some unpleasant mandates, or, as Dave Mills has suggested, develop a town energy plan for our own use and benefit without seeking regional or state approval, or simply stop work on this topic and focus on other business. I think those are the three options that are probably before you now.
You're right.
I remind you an old saying, come to a fork in the road, take it.
So what would be the implications if we had our own energy plan, but it wasn't, but not going through the regional process?
I don't know that it would be entitled to the same kind of deference that Butch Shaw had notified the town about as a good reason for seeking a Regional Planning Commission approved town plan.
I don't think we get much deference anyway, because they can vote whatever way they want.
Well, Mark makes that point that even if we did follow the state and Regional Planning Commission mandates, we might still get rolled over if the state or the region doesn't like what we've come up with. He remembers very well how difficult it was to get the town plan approved, let alone having to reopen and going through that process.
I'd say rather than do an energy plan, we do an economic development plan.
It seems to me, from what I read here, the information you provided us, that the Planning Commission didn't want to reopen the town plan. And it also, in the remarks that I read, the state had changed the rules of the game in the middle of the game. And I feel as though our planning commission are on top of this pretty well. I don't think it's, I don't think I'm knowledgeable enough to openly rule the planning commission. I'd like to back the planning commission and let their guidance be our...
And I talked with our Renault calling down at Rutherford Regional. He assured me that we could do an energy plan as a standalone option. But sometimes between them and a few months ago, the rules changed. And so now, if we do one, in order to get Rutherford Regional approval, we have to open up old town plan. And I am upset against that. But I do think it would be a good thing if the town had an energy plan. I mean, we've got a small unit in our town plan now, but I think we need to expand it and add something to let give us, you know, the due deference or whatever. Probably not, but at least it will be another piece of evidence that we can submit.
We have a plan, we have a plan.
No, there's one thing, no, as far as I know, we can have a plan on our own. It just won't be approved by them.
If the regional, if the regional plan doesn't like our own plan, they apparently have the authority to overrule us anyway, don't they?
If we submit it to them, but if it's never submitted to them, then they really don't have any say in it.
That's the way to go, probably.
Now, Dave, is this something that can be done and put into our next plan, which is going to be due, what, seven, eight years?
Well, you see, that's my thought process.
So if we get the work done?
We will have it done, and we'll have that length of time if there's fine tuning or whatever needs. I mean, it's essentially, I mean, back when I was chair of the Planning Commission, one of the things that I wanted us to do, because we know our town plan isn't perfect. I mean, we were running out of time. We essentially took the old town plan we had and modified it a little bit. But it isn't really that much different than the town plan we had before. There are some changes, yes. But a lot of it wasn't what we really felt we should have. Unfortunately, we did not have time to start with a blank piece of paper and write an entire new town plan. But if we do this energy plan, that is one of the steps in writing the town plan that we will have to do in another seven years.
So that'd be a big step already done then?
Yeah.
Yes, it would, yes. That's my feeling.
And I hate to see us end up where Brandon's been. You know what I mean? To not have at least some preferred sighting in place, you know, or at least start to be looking at that.
Here's a question. If the consensus of the board seems to be to advise the Planning Commission locally to work on a town plan not to be submitted for the state or regional approval, do you want to associate any kind of timetable on that to give them some maybe helpful parameters about how much time they should invest in this or leave it to their own discretion?
Leave it to them.
I would think it's up to their discretion. Other guys doing it.
Mark, when I talked to Mark about this, you know, he's talking, he's talking two or three meetings. I'm thinking it'll probably take him three or four meetings to write something up. I mean, they've all done a lot of research on it already, so it's, you know, it's not completely new to them. They've done enough research that they know they really don't want to go down the 14-page checklist.
Yeah.
I don't think it would take them, you know, that long to write it up.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good to me.
And is that the sense, that's how I should communicate it to the Planning Commission?
They just start on it, not worry about the 14, you know?
As long as they don't put the town in any jeopardy.
Right.
Let me ask that question of the region. Does it make sense for me to ask the region whether we can have our own town plan and not seek their input or approval?
Yeah, I would like to, I mean...
Or is that ringing the dinner bell for them to stick their nose in our business?
I think we need to know that, though.
I know, I think I would like to know.
Because I'm concerned, I'm concerned that if they say, if you've got an energy plan, then you have to submit it at some point.
I mean, something that could be done is we write it up.
Just don't do it.
And we send it down there and just have them look over it. I mean, when we did, I forget the last, I guess it was probably the last town plan, Dave Sullia and I went down there two or three different times and met with that bow and just went over parts of what we were doing and got their feedback. So, I mean, if they write the plan up and take it down there and they give feedback, and if it's something we feel... and if it's something we feel we want to change, we can, and if not, we just don't.
Yeah, I think that's.
But again, we don't want to bring the town plan, the whole town plan back to them.
Well, David, David, my concern is that if we get into this, then the state changes the rules, and we don't know what the changes are going to be, we could be screwed.
Maybe.
If the state, the state changes the rules every five minutes.
Well, yeah.
They could say, they could say, regardless if you're gonna submit it or not, if you've got an energy plan, it has to go with the town plan. Worst case scenario.
They can say that, but if, if we don't ever bring it to regional for approval, I mean, we can just, we can just say, listen, this is, this is part of our next town plan.
Ultimately, ultimately, the state has the final say in anything, as you know, and they can say, that's too bad, we disagree with it, and this is the way it's gonna be.
Right, but I think, again, bringing it to, like, Ed, just to look over it, is a lot different than formally bringing it to the regional for it to be approved.
It is, it is under the current rules, but if they change the rules.
They change the rules.
If they change the rules, which they've apparently done already at one point, what's to prevent them from doing it again? Say, if you submit, if you ask, if you have a town plan, whether you submit it or not, it is considered the town plan that goes in your, the energy plan that goes in your town plan.
The planning commission.
But if, but if we write it as a completely stand, in other words, if we write, my opinion is, we write it up as a standalone document, as we were told initially we could, we, if we bring it down to Ed to just have him look over it or not, that doesn't really matter, but at least we've got something, and we're starting to write our town plan for seven or eight years from now, which we don't know what the rules are gonna be then, but at least we've got something written down and we've got something that shows people in town what we're, what we're looking at as far as citing goes.
I've always found if you have something in writing, it can be used against you.
No one, no one can force the town to seek an amendment of its town plan before the eight years are up.
Right, so.
Unless they change the rules.
Well, I mean, that's.
Well, but one, one might never get out of bed if they were worried that much about changing rules.
Once you have a town plan, once you have an energy plan, you're giving them the option of saying, have a town plan, now it has to go, it has to be submitted.
I would think we just work on the document and don't.
I know, I just think we should just start.
I don't, I don't want to go to the rural region.
No, I wouldn't take it, I, I would be maybe working on the document and have it so that when we want it, it's here, it's ready, but don't submit to anybody, don't let them know that we've got it done.
There you go.
Just do it and be quiet.
That's my point.
I, I wouldn't make it a standalone document or anything, I'd just say, here, this is gonna be our town plan.
I don't think it was said to submit it, just to have, like, having it and look over it is a lot different than submitting it formally.
Just say, we're working on our next plan, and this is the, the first thing that's coming up.
Well, yeah, that's essentially what, what they'd be doing.
Exactly, so we're just ahead of the game on this one, that'd be my thought.
And again, if, if there is a, a solar or a wind or whatever thing, I believe, and I don't know if Rick is in the audience or not, but I believe he would know, I think the town will have standing anyway, so by having standing, and if we have this document, we can say, listen, this is what the county of Pittsburgh wants, here it is.
Yep.
All right, yeah.
But, but, but if there's no action by the select board to adopt it.
Right, that's why I'm saying, we're not gonna adopt it right now.
It's not legally effective, and if nobody in the community knows we've got a plan, what's the point of having it?
No, but it's ready to go when we do one.
I see, so the idea is to develop a draft for future use in a town plan amendment seven years down the road.
That's my.
At least just get the process started, if we can't agree on what the next step is, at least let's start with the first one.
By putting together a plan of our own liking, they can't say that we've ignored them and we're trying to work against them.
Exactly.
It may not be what they want, but it's something that we, this town has put together and is something to work from.
So once there's a plan drafted, maybe we'll ask the planning commission to address the board, and at that time, we can decide whether to show it to anybody.
I think, yeah, perfect.
We can do that in exactly the same.
Okey dokey.
All right, then.
Okay. All right, consider staffing options for the lister's office.
I guess this will be mostly in the way of just an update as to what's been happening in the lister's office since the resignations of John Ujere and Donna Wilson. First, Nick Michael had two weeks of overlap with Donna Wilson, during which I think he was able to pick up quite a bit, and during which they were able to lodge the grand list, which will ultimately be the basis on which you set tax rates. So that was a big milestone met, and we appreciate Donna helping so much with those two weeks of, of transition. Since that time, the remaining lister, Nicholas Michael, has met with the state in terms of two different personnel whose job it is to help people in our district with lister issues. We've also sent him to an all-day vision training up in Newport on Monday, because we had heard about that training and we decided, let's split the cost of doing that with Newport, and so Nicholas Michael went up for that. I think that what we've got is a variable set of requirements from the lister's office, which is very seasonal in nature. Now we've got lots of permits pending, and that'll involve inspections of these sites. That's not terribly heavy lifting, it's sort of routine, and it's the kind of thing that Linda Trask, the secretary, has overseen with the other listers on many occasions. What I've done is I've asked Nicholas Michael, I have asked Nicholas Michael to kind of give us a report of the game plan going forward, at least until town meeting, at which time, hopefully, there'll be elections with new people coming on to assist him. But I've asked him, do it like a calendar-based plan, and let us know at what times you might need extra pair of hands from an expert, and we can always hire professional help to come in. We've also learned that not only Newport has the pretty rare, but very good, I'm told, vision software, but also Bridgewater does, so that could be another opportunity for networking with someone else who works with that program, and, you know, networking and cross-training and helping each other with that. So basically, we're waiting for Nicholas Michael to identify kind of where he feels that he is now, and what his needs are, and what his plans are for dealing with the workload going forward. So as soon as I have that, I will share it with you.
What are the chances of Linda Trask giving, giving more hours, or can't she?
I don't know that the secretarial hours would be of much help, because the kind of work that we're talking about requires kind of the trained lister's eye.
I don't know.
She's more of an administrator, but, but she's seen it all being done, and she kind of knows the language, and so I think she has been quite helpful to Nicholas Michael. If, if he, for example, asks for more hours, I'd certainly be in favor of doing that and presenting it to you, because we want to make sure that that office runs as effectively as possible.
I was gonna say, if he felt he needed to do more.
Sure, absolutely.
I would object to give him more hours.
Absolutely.
If he has a desire to have some outside help that's readily available.
It is.
That could come in.
It is, the statute allows for him to simply ask the select board and the select board to hire or appoint someone, doesn't have to be a town resident, to help him. Right. Meanwhile, we've had no applications submitted in response to our posting for new listers. We will keep at it on the website, in flyers, in the newsletter, and in any other venue we can think of. So if anybody knows anybody with kind of good common sense, perhaps some real estate background, that would be ideal, please have them be in touch with the town. There is a stipend that goes with the position, the hours are not terribly demanding generally, it is seasonal, so there's ups and downs, but generally, the listers work four days a week, about two hours a day in the morning, that's at least been the pattern, and they have together, shared in the stipend by comparing numbers of hours per month.
They're hitting sort of a coasting period of time from immediate future.
Yeah, we were really under the gun with the grand list hanging over the head, and now that that's been lodged, that gives us a little bit of a breather.
New business, Pittsburgh Day celebration.
Yes, we're gonna have a final prep session on Thursday, July 11th at 5:30. Anybody interested in helping prepare for and get ready for Pittsburgh Day, feel free to come and attend, but we've already secured tents, we've gotten commitments from food providers, we've got three musical acts that will be participating, as in the past, we have lots of kids' games, there'll be portlets all over the place, there'll be a silent auction, which will require lots of hustling to recruit donors for prizes to be bid on. This year, we're talking about a car show, so if anybody has a vehicle they're particularly proud of or want to show off, please use this as an opportunity to make your splash in concert with Pittsburgh Day. We have an application pending with the Vermont National Guard to do another helicopter fly-in, and our fingers are crossed for that. We've lined up the same folks who did fireworks last year to do that again this year, and we've even got the same DJ who was there on site last year to perform again at a much discounted rate, which we appreciate. So Pittsburgh Day's coming, August 17th, Saturday.
Starting at two, right?
Starting at two, but there'll be events even before then.
Car show people should be there by 1:30.
Yep, to put your cars in place, yeah, so they can be observed. Will there also be fun runs in the morning and a cornhole tournament like there was last year, I believe?
I believe there is.
So it'll be a full day.
Okay, review the fuel bids.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this may be something that we follow up with an executive session since it is a consideration of contracts, but for broad purposes, we can tell you that there were clear low bidders on heating fuel and off and on-road diesel. The real question mark is propane, and that's the only one I would think we would need to go to executive session on, but with respect to.
John, John, I'm not sure we can go into executive session, we didn't vote on it, we only voted for one item.
Yeah, sorry.
That's true, that's true, we talked about personnel.
We talked about only personnel.
Yep.
So.
That's a good point, although, although the counterverbal argument would be, that's for benefit of the folks in the public who might want to know what's happening, and there are no members of the public who would be affected by your changing tack at this point in the meeting.
That's true.
Just a thought.
For that one item.
Can you go back to amend your motion?
I'm.
I'm going into executive session.
I'm not sure you can.
I don't know if you can, can you?
Well, we can do our best to talk about this in public, I'm happy to do it, but it may involve your deliberations, which I don't know that you want to have in public.
Yeah, there's one part of it.
You could hear the facts, then you could vote on at least the two matters that are not in dispute or of concern, and then you can decide whether you even need any debate or discussion of the third item, and maybe vote on that in public session, that's another option.
Sure.
Okay, but back picking up where I left off, the two cases that are pretty clear are heating fuel, in which case Champlain Valley Fuels is the low bidder at 10 cents a gallon over the Valero Rack price with a cap of 220 per gallon, and the diesel, which is also 10 cents a gallon over the Valero Rack price for both.
And that's Champlain Valley?
Champlain Valley, for both diesel ultra-low sulfur and off-road diesel. So it could be, there could be a motion, if somebody wanted to make the motion, to award heating fuel contracts and the diesel contracts to Champlain Valley Fuels, which happens to be our current supplier with whom we've had a good relationship, which is the low bidder. On the other topic, we have propane, which we could maybe hold for discussion of the other two items.
I'd make the motion that we go with Champlain.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And that's for, that's for both heating fuel and the diesel.
And the diesel.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? It carries unanimous.
Okay, now, the reason I mentioned that propane is a little bit less clear is that we received three bids for propane, one from our current supplier, which is Procter Gas, at a fixed price of 1.299 per gallon, however, they are apparently the high bidder. Irving Energy has bid 1.22 per gallon, and Suburban has bid 1.24 per gallon, also with the option of a 30 cent a gallon over rack price option. The reason I bring this to your attention is that, the reason I bring this to your attention, unless you're talking, Dave?
Dave, we lost you?
No, I'm here.
Okay.
The reason we're bringing this to your attention is that with the Irving bid, there is language about a penalty if the town does not purchase 95% of the amount that we estimate to be our needs. And I did ask them about it, and they didn't seem willing.
We have trouble with it.
They didn't seem willing to waive or strike that provision, and it, it just makes me a little bit nervous that maybe we have a year that's not so bad and we use less than we think we're gonna use. It would be a shame to get penalized for doing so.
To me, that's disqualifying.
Yeah, and we've, in the past, had some issues service-wise, but not local.
If we were to have had that type of a deal this past.
So you've got, what, a 2 cent difference between?
2 cents, yeah.
2 cent difference between Irving and Suburban, Dave?
And what is, what would their penalty be if we don't use the right amount?
It's quite convoluted, let me see if I can find you the language in the.
No, I couldn't find the language, it doesn't make much sense.
No, I agree with you, and that's why I think that it's, it's asking for potential trouble. If we don't understand it, they probably have a team of lawyers who can tell us what they think it means.
It was a cost, and then 30 cents over rack, I think.
Yeah.
Which would be quite bad.
It's a, it's a, it's a 10, it's a 10-line, bit of fine print in paragraph three, talking about liquidated damages, and that kind of makes me nervous.
That's what we asked for.
That's what we asked for.
No, it's certainly beyond the scope of what we asked for, we didn't ask for anybody to ask, to quote us a penalty, for example.
It's kind of too bad to compare their bid with the other two, because they're not offering, they're not putting in that stipulation.
Right, the other two, at least, at least the one we've had with Procter Gas has never quoted or hinted at a penalty, and Suburban, in their email, which is in tonight's packet, said there's absolutely no penalty.
I've never, I've never heard of that before, and I've bought a lot of gas for construction sites over the years, and I've never run into a penalty if we didn't use, you always pay what you use.
Yeah.
Always right over the rack rate.
To me, that disqualifies them, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, yeah, because we're, it looks like if, if we, for whatever reason, we change a heating thing or whatever, and we become more efficient, we're gonna get penalized.
Yeah, we're gonna get banged on it, so.
It's probably for them to make money on global warming.
I'm sure.
Which they're contributing to.
No, propane.
So I don't know, it looks to me like Suburban's got, would have the low bid.
I'm over you, cut the Suburban bid.
A second.
I have a motion and a second on the table to accept Suburban.
And I have confirmed with Suburban that there's no hidden costs or fees with switching out suppliers or changing tanks or anything.
Yeah, I saw that.
Any further discussion? If not hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries unanimous.
Okay, we didn't have to go into executive session.
We didn't need executive session.
All right, perfect.
I know we wouldn't. Ooh, I hope so. I don't. Review mowing and landscape bids.
Yes, Bradley Keith has once again bid on landscaping and mowing in town, and has once again bid considerably less than his competitor, which is Top Dog, who also has done good work for the town, but at a higher price.
There was a difference of two or three weeks.
There was, but, but not nearly enough to justify the difference. The Top Dog total for each year is $6,380, whereas BK, you guys quoted, $3,958.
I'd make the motion, we owe it BK.
A second.
We have a motion, second on the table, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Carries unanimous, BK Services. Alternative authorized representative regarding the Depot Hill Sewer Project.
You did skip one, but it doesn't matter, we can go back to it.
Road and Bridge, Sam.
Oh, my goodness, I did.
Every now and then, the.
My check mark went down too far.
The folks at V-Trans. The folks at Vtrans developed slightly modified road and bridge standards.
Yeah.
I'm told by the highway foreman that we're already meeting and exceeding these proposed standards, and they would help us make the case to the state and to FEMA on occasion that we're being good boys and girls here in town, doing good business practices for the road work, and hopefully it's not terribly controversial.
You just need to sign that, right?
That's right. Is there a signature page in the folder?
I didn't see it.
If not, I'll give you mine, Mr. Chairman, for circulation.
I was going to say, I thought we had signed it.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
No, it's not open.
Okay.
I didn't see it.
I haven't hit it.
I did not either.
It's looking payroll.
Yeah, looking payroll. I mean, yeah.
It's right here. Here's the, here's the signature page, and here's the-
That's all we need.
It's just a two-pager. I guess each of you are going to sign it on page two, if you wouldn't mind.
Let me sign it then.
No? And it already, I think, will come in handy because we're about to talk with FEMA about that storm, and it'll be good to be able to show them that we've got the latest things already approved.
I'll just sign on the back.
We didn't have it.
I'll give you another one.
That remains to be seen. We haven't tallied it up, but you're right, it wasn't a big impact. But I wouldn't be surprised if it was maybe 15, 20,000 bucks worth, something like that. I'll look that for you.
Did you? You're a good fellow. Dave, you can sign this document when you get back sometime, maybe.
I think a majority, a majority will be adequate.
Is it adequate? Okay. Never mind, you don't have to.
Okay, all right.
Come back from Calgary right now.
But I figured if you did, and he said yes, he could sign it later.
Yeah, and it's in the minutes that he's already done if anybody questions us.
Okay, now, Representative for the Depot.
Yes. I've been already designated as the authorized representative regarding the Depot Hill Sewer Project, you know, to sign contracts and things on behalf of the town. They've asked us to designate a second person. Makes sense to have the chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission, who's overseeing the project, to be named, and that's why I'm proposing that we, I'm not, or appoint Clarence Greenow to that.
Motion for that?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion for Clarence Greenow. I have a second.
Get care of that.
We have a second? All those in favor of Clarence Greenow? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Aye. So I have it.
And I have another missing form, unless you've got one there, Tom. We're signing off on that.
I don't have that. There's another one.
I'll have to talk with Linda.
You were sloughing out this time.
I'm already throwing her under the bus.
There you go. Poor girl's just back for me, and you're already, yeah.
The buck stops here, Mr. Chairman. My fault. I'm sorry.
That's all right. She's a guy with a big buck.
That's it, that's it.
Here, please.
What?
Sorry, Dave.
My signature's yours as we go.
Stop using Hank's excuse.
Well, it does. We need to stand. Okay, we got one last thing, and that is the notice on inspection for the class roads in Chittenden?
Yes. We are a neighbor of Chittenden, as you know, and the statutes require them to notify their neighboring towns of their plans to convert, I think, 10 or 11 portions of town road into legal trails. These are class four town roads. And because we own the property in the town also, that's another reason for them to give us notice. And what we're looking at is the fact that the town owns a forest block of about 290 acres up on the ridge in Chittenden, which we access from both the west side and the east side on occasion, and occasionally do some logging near the town's water supply. It does not look as though the plans articulated by the town of Chittenden will have any impact on us accessing those properties.
Whoa, we lost them this time.
He was, by the way, he was calling me.
Oh.
Would you like me to give him a quick buzz?
Yeah, give him another quick one, just in case.
Shut off.
Cornstalk, we'll cut him off.
Hey, it's me. Leave a message, and I'll call you back.
We are almost done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you hear him calling again, we can just press the flashing light.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't think it's going to affect town access to our timber block. That would be the only reason we'd be interested at all in that. If I learn anything different, I'll certainly let you know, or I will attend to this public hearing.
So we don't need to take action?
No, I just wanted to make you aware of it since it was addressed to the select board.
Okay.
They're looking to cut down some of their maintenance, I would say.
I don't know what the reasons are, but as we all know, there's no obligation to maintain class four roads to begin with.
Well, I thought it did say in there that it would have been too expensive to get it up to the current water standards, so...
All these hydrologically connected segments that we're trying to deal with, they must be trying to deal with, and they give up, maybe.
Well, that concludes all our business in open session tonight.
Well, mine, no.
Hello? Is that you? Oh, we didn't hang up on you. You hung up on us.
Yeah, you did.
No, you hung up on us.
It was Alicia.
How?
Undermeade.
All right, that concludes it, then we're going to go into the executive session.
Thanks for going here, boy.
Huh?
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.